Call to meeting order please. Call the roll.
Ms. Escalante, here. Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mr. Voorhees?
Here.
A quorum has been established. Uh, next on the agenda, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you citizens can address the board with any questions, comments, or concerns. Uh, we ask that you approach the mic, let's just speak at the mic, state your name and address. Uh, be mindful that you have three minutes to make your statements or inquiries. Also be mindful that you may not receive a response to your inquiries tonight. Uh, last but not least, I ask that you address all comments, questions, and concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments. Second call, citizens' comments. Last call for citizens' comments. Hearing the saying "none." Next on the agenda, consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, item A, approval of the minutes for the October 17th, 2018 regular meeting, October 24th, 2018 board workshop, November 13th, 2018 work session, and November 14th, 2018 special meeting. The board will entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the approved minutes of the regular meeting of October 17th, the board workshop of October 24th, the work session of November 13th, and the special board meeting of November 14th.
It's been moved by Mr. Voorhees to approve the minutes of the October 17th, 2018 regular meeting, October 24th, 2018 board workshop, November 13th, 2018 work session, and November 14th, 2018 special meeting. Is there a second?
Support.
Second by Ms. Escalante. Any questions, concerns, comments, corrections to any of the agenda? That would move in second. Hearing the saying "none." Call the roll please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante? Yes. Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, next, action items, and we're doing them kind of sort of different tonight. Uh, we are, any item that requires action will be noted as on the prospective committee. So, the item six is, um, coming out of the business committee. Uh, item A, six A, is the 2017-2018 audit report.
Thank you. Uh, yes, we, this year, we work with Raymond Latman, explaining to the audit firm to do our items. And, um, we hope, uh, those will work, uh, with team and the team to present. And I will turn over to him so we can give you guys the outcome of our planning for the 2017-18 school year.
And before he begins, um, one of the, uh, work sessions that was approved a minutes from was a dedicated work session where the board went over the audit with the audit firm. Uh, the lead auditor came into that session and went over the audit with the board, gave us the opportunity to ask some questions regarding the audit. And we'll just have the same opportunity again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Ken Melvin. I am the manager on this audit, and I'm from Raymond, as Ms. Davis said. Also, as Mr. Rickman said, uh, the audit partner on the job has already been out and discussed a number of these items, but I wanted to hit some of the highlights in the, in the final report. Uh, if I could draw your attention to the found financial statement in single audit act compliance. Page one of this document, it's actually about the third page and has our audit opinion. We've issued an unmodified opinion, which means that this is a clean opinion. The financial statements are presented in materially correct in accordance with government audit standards. Um, page two of this same document, we had a couple of restatements during the year. One of them was the implementation of a new GASB standard. This recognizes a OPEB liability for future OPEB benefits through the midsters plan on your balance sheet. Um, the second one being for, um, the private purpose trust funds. We had a comment related to that and some of the investment support in there. If I can flip to page 15. This is the balance sheet for the entire district. Um, as you can see, uh, I'd say about halfway down the page, there's a net other post-employment benefit liability that refers to the GASB 75 implementation. This is something that the district did not have on their books before and is required to be recorded there now. So, um, a deficit increase because of that.
What line is that so far?
Uh, it would be the right before total liabilities. It's 5.3 million dollars.
Gotcha.
Yep. Uh, this was unavoidable, something that the GASB requires and is required to be in your report. Um, page 18 has the, the balance sheet of the governmental funds. Uh, the general fund being highlighted here. If we flip to page 20, you see the income statement, general fund, uh, third line from the bottom, roughly a $600,000 increase in fund balance for the year, so that's good. Uh, you know, kind of chipping away at that deficit. The total deficit for the year is, uh, about 128,000. So, that deficit is going down. If trends continue, uh, be out of the deficit. Sure.
128,000 means that we're... Does it recognizes the, um, if it's 100,000? So, in effect, if we didn't have to recognize that 100,000, it would have went down to 28,000, is that correct? I'd say that's remarkable.
I think you're referring to the P E S G.
Yes.
That is one item I wanted to highlight on here. We have a special item, but right above that, actually. And, and you are correct, if it wasn't for that, the deficit would have been lower. So. Any other questions on the financial statements? Flipping through to, um, page 50. This would be the last page of the footnotes. I won't go over this in any great detail. There's a lot of information in here that, that fills out the, the balance sheet numbers. Here you can just see the restatements, uh, beginning that position being decreased by 5.2 million for the GASB 75 I mentioned before. Going forward. Page 71 is where we have our, um, single audit reporting starts. Um, it lists some of the findings. I'm not going to go over these in any detail, as Nate already did it at the previous meeting. I don't think anything has changed materially since then, maybe a couple wording pieces. But, um, kind of some of the highlights on that might be, um, the segregation of duties. I know there's been some turnover at the district and, and some in the business office and some of the challenges with that. So, um, hopefully going forward, that should not be an issue. Uh, the next thing I have, I'll call your attention to the stapled document. It says, uh, communication with those charged with governments. This is our communication to you, the board. Just some things that we're stating here, again, with the GASB 75 on page two of this document. No disagreements with management. I think Teresa and her team did a, a great job getting us what we needed to, to issue this and every, like she mentioned, everyone worked diligently on this. Uh, page A1, we have some, some comments here. These are things that, that weren't findings necessarily that made it to the single audit report that I mentioned, uh, but things that, that would be worth taking a look at to strengthen internal controls. Um, one being athletic events and the using of numbered tickets. That allows for a complete record of, of what was collected. And then on the last one, the onsite reviews, very minor issue there with, with the timing on those. Uh, attachment B1 has some upcoming changes in standards. The only thing I'm going to touch base on here is GASB 84. We expect this to have a very large impact on school districts across our entire state. It, the way the analysis is shaking out on this, a lot of student activity, um, accounts that are currently in agency funds and fiduciary funds will have to bring, be brought either into the general fund or special revenue fund and as a result, be budgeted for. That will be not this current fiscal year that we're in, but the one following. So, we'll be in communication with, with Ms. Davis on that and getting some work aids together, but it will be a big change that I'm sure you realize, so.
So, does that mean any fundraisers that are done in the district will have to be reported differently, uh, under the, um, you know, this standard, just real quickly, you know?
Yeah, I think that would be a fair assessment. There, it's a very, very complex standard. We are still working through it as, as auditors to prepare for the implementation. Um, kind of one of the, the big criteria is whether the district has administrative involvement with those funds. So, if there's a teacher, a lot of times that'll be a student group. If there's a fundraiser, if there's district employees involved with it, it's probably going to have to go in the general fund. So, that's, uh, yeah, at school districts, it's going to be a lot of work. And, uh, most of the districts are in a fairly similar spot. They have a lot of student activity accounts. It'll be a challenge, but we'll definitely help the district work through it, so.
So, that, that would directly fit like booster clubs, you know?
More than likely, yeah. Booster clubs, anything you have for yearbook funds, class funds, I'm just, I mean, there's probably 100 that, that you could list that are... Yep, so.
I don't do paper. I don't do paper in the term.
Little sad joke by Hawk. Long story, let me tell you.
This isn't something we need to look at, though.
No, 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 no.
Other than that, I, I don't see anything on here that I, I think's going to have a huge impact on the district, so.
So, has there been, you said, you know, you and the auditor, your colleagues in the firm, they're working on this. Is there a, a standard operating procedure that they're going to implement for this piece? Like you said, there could be 100 different avenues, you know, that, you know, people are collecting and generating money, uh, in the school system for various projects and efforts and et cetera, et cetera. So, is there a standard operating procedure that we need to adhere to? Is it established yet, or?
So, where, where we're at right now, and this is in conjunction with a lot of other firms in the state as well, and, uh, statewide standards groups, is there's currently a fairly complicated flow chart for GASB 84 and where things fall out into different buckets. We've been a part of drafting a memo for the MGFOA, the Michigan Government Finance Officers Association, and also had a separate appendix for school districts that tailored that specifically. So, what we're working on now is sending that to our districts and having some more condensed guidance that isn't so hard to read as the GASB, it's kind of, I mean, it's, it's like reading any other piece of law literature. It's, it can be convoluted and really the flow chart is what helps. So, we fully expect to, to work with our districts and provide guidance on the, the vast majority of situations, like those ones I just mentioned are very common. But there might be a handful of them that we really have to dig in and see what's going on here, what's the involvement? Is there other mitigating factors at, at play? So, uh, probably in the springtime, certainly before you need to start working on next year's budget before the end of the year, so we don't want to wait till audit time after the end of the fiscal year. So, definitely over the next couple, you know, six months, uh, there'll, there'll be a lot of reach out from us. Is that, I hope that answers your question, okay.
So, did that, that start, the fiscal year, January 19th, or is it the start, start of school year, September?
So, this will start in fiscal year July 1 of 19. So, by June 30 of 19, we might actually, I might be getting confused on the dates. I think we do have an extra year on that. However, that's something we'll, we'll definitely be communicating. I get confused myself on, on some of this stuff, so. It will have an effect starting July 1.
July 1 of 19?
Yes.
Because it says effective 12, 15, 20, 19, 40, that's fiscal year 2020.
So, this will be effective for you in fiscal year 2020, yes. So, July, June 30, 2020. Does that help? Not the current, not the next audit coming up, but the one after that. But we want it, we definitely want to make sure to get it in your budgeting. That's the real key piece of getting out in front of this. Any other questions on GASB 84? Um, after page B2 starts the rep letter, this is just basically a list of things that, that management has represented to us as part of the audit. This is a common document and, um, that's about it. As far as my presentation goes, I'll, uh, any other questions? I'm happy to answer them.
So, your management letter, for, for the clean audit?
Yep.
Unqualified audit?
Unqualified, unmodified. The, the terminology's changed over the last couple of years, but, but no, we don't have a, a modified opinion, so that's good.
No major finding?
No major issues, nothing that would make us qualify the, the opinion that's kind of a major, a major issue. So, we didn't run into anything like that.
Understood, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I wish everybody...
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Uh, this is an action item. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the 2017-2018 audit report as presented by Mr. Mark. Second by Ms. Escalante. Any questions? Our motion on the floor. Hearing the saying "none." Call the roll please.
Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item 6B, the approval of bills for payment. Business committee? Want to chime in on that?
Yes. Um, we met, uh, in the last, it wasn't prepared to do that part, but we met last week on Tuesday, which was what they, they walked at 9:30 in the morning. It was myself, Adrian and Ms. Davis, and we went through all of the bills and everything.
Sorry, the 13th?
13th? You're right, it was the 13th, okay. Um, we went through all of the bills, everything flowed through, we found everything to be in order, and, um, I'm not sure what time we joined. Jimmy would have had that information.
Probably run again at 13.
Yeah, it was, yeah. So, that's, that's all.
So, we have a committee to back the, uh, approve the bills for payment?
Yep, so I'll move to approve the bills for payment.
That's coming from a committee, that's coming from a committee that requires a second. Any questions, concerns, comments on the motion on the floor, approval of the bills for payment? Hearing the saying "none." Call the roll please.
Ms. Escalante? Yes. Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Who cares?
Item 6C, food service truck. The background information, the food service truck had to be taken out of service because of age and at the end of its useful life. Maintenance team responds to time inefficiencies or hinder trying to use two vehicles for three people. Ms. Davis?
Yes, thank you. Yes, we, um, tried to operate, uh, the district without that third truck, and this is pertaining to their huge problem now. And some of our work is not getting completed because they're trying to work around. And we do have a lot of over in our food, um, fine, so we do need to get the truck and if it's out over there, does not impact the general fund, so it's a totally separate part of the business. So, with that, you're making a recommendation to the board to get approval for the purchase of the truck so that our staff can be more efficient and effective.
Ms. Escalante, the representative from the business committee? Address that business committee, will you?
Um, actually, we didn't address this in the business committee, but I've been in contact via email with Ms. Davis concerning the truck, the purchase of the vehicle. Um, I had a couple of questions as to, you know, what the condition of the truck that they were replacing was. I think it's important that you relay that too because it's...
This is the truck that, uh, our team has tried to patch up. It's the one that doesn't have a floor in it, so the brakes will, and then, and the, this, as a gas...
Brake fluid pump truck.
Yeah, that you do, your people, uh, you don't touch the ground when you're using it. And it is a hazard, a load hazard, and a danger for the staff to use. The brakes will go out and so that's why we did have to retire it, I believe it's last year. And there'll be really need to replace that truck because it is a danger for our staff.
So, we haven't been using that truck this year down to two trucks?
Yes.
Because it hasn't put down on the shelf?
Yes, and we were trying to make it work, and it just wasn't, it was doing more behaviors than it was a help. And with our, uh, limited staff now, it's, you know, we have different projects with each other responsible for, and we need a truck to get back and forth to the different projects where we get, uh, haul items back and forth between the, um, the jobs. So, we've been using one of the general find trucks to try to help with the food service items. And we need to, so that's why we request the, the purchase of a new truck.
So, this is the truck that, the big truck?
No, not that.
With the lift on the back?
No, that's a, they, this is another, this is a different truck. It's more like a, somewhat of a pickup truck type.
Okay.
And we carry equipment between the kitchens.
Okay.
And, and it's usually work items that they have, or they have to fix different items in the kitchen. And, so we use that big truck, which we were talking about with the lift. That's what we are hauling food back and forth, uh, between, or going to GS, uh, to pick up and forth. So, that's what that one is for. But this other pickup truck is actually for maintenance, uh, for each of the kitchens. So, we're in a, that's what we...
Is that a white truck?
Yes, it's a white truck.
It's the, um, is it 150?
Yeah. And occasionally if you go through the back, uh, you will see a car because the, and we have to take it completely out of position.
Is that something that we can try to, um, take to a yard to get whatever cost we can off of it? Or, I know a lot of the used car lot, they'll use it for parks and, uh, we'll be able to get some out of it?
That's what we're trying to work on, uh, dealing with, uh, Dr. McFadden is giving us ideas to, to do that. They're, at the least, you know, to pile it out.
The county has, um, auction program that, I don't know what requirements are to be, I would put a bid for or something out there. The auction stuff, as it is. Chair would entertain a motion relative to the purchase of service, food service truck.
It's determined that we approve the purchase of the, um, signature board of a F-350 approved for that pickup at 33,689.
It's been moved by Mr. Voorhees to approve the purchase of Ford F-350 pickup truck in the amount of 35,000...
33,689.
33,689, uh, presented.
This is a 19, because that's a Ford F-350 approved for a four-by-four pickup truck. It's a, uh, six-foot brake, yes, we have one here.
And, yes, what we need to do with the food service truck, yes, it will be...
Just, just one question, will this be, uh, this be, this works? I, this is, I think this is to the state and the county that...
Yes, what we ended up doing, uh, because yes, they state and that county go out and get the bears or the various trucks, and we found, so we did get the bear out of that, and we found one to signature for. They also, I'm with the program, so they gave us like $2,000, we did surprise, so we get it even less than what the state was offering.
Where will this move?
Food service, yes.
I forgot to give a second. It's moved by Mr. Voorhees, uh, to approve the purchase of a food service truck. F-350, the amount of 32,689, as presented, is there a second?
Support.
Second is Escalante. Any additional questions, comments, concerns?
No, this is 23, the other two are, they were...
Yes, yes. I mean, they're catching, we, we make sure we keep up with the numbers, so.
This one will be very important to make sure that we change the oil.
Absolutely, we have them on a schedule, and all of our units now on a schedule. And it, but it was, at least every 90 days, but we are getting, uh, rotated, tires rotated, the oil changed.
Something's not just my, would you say?
Exactly, yes, and that's what we found, we got to change the oil.
Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing the saying "none." Call the roll please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante? Yes. Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries.
Item seven, policy committee. Mr. Mark?
Yes, sir. Um, the policy that will be, uh, coming for us today will be policy 6325. Um, it's advised to improve... Um, it's advised to include updated language per federal guidelines. And I know we have these things that's in the background.
Okay, thank you, sir. As this is part of audit requirement, the, the federal government has required that instead of us just looking at large dollar items, that we also have to review, uh, micro, and, yeah, micro purchases. Meaning our very small purchases as well. Want to make sure that we're not always just going to one certain vendor. That we're, you know, making sure that we are checking other vendors and not being exclusive with anyone. Especially when you are, you can't, uh, get the product from other vendors. So we've put a dollar for micro purchases. We've put a dollar amount that's not exceed thirty-five hundred dollars. So anything under thirty-five hundred dollars, we have to, we show that we've, uh, checked around a number of reasonable number of, vendor to make sure that we have a good price. And we didn't put, uh, exact numbers, but some products are only sold by a particular vendor. So we do want to make it, and that's the case, we want to make sure we note that, that the product is only supplied by one or two vendors. But for the most part, we do try to get at least three, um, per, two estimates from different vendors. So for the most part, it is, um, thirty-five hundred dollars or less. But the competitive bids, and this is mostly for, um, federal dollars and any grants that we're looking at, that would be, uh, um, the threshold is at the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's under item number five. And then, so if you have a non-competitive bids, we're making sure that we are checking a number, reasonable numbers to make our purchases. It's really just to make sure that we're not, uh, being exclusive with any one vendor. And also the best require that we look at suspension and debarment, uh, listing. And they put those out every so often, they need to. If you want to make a purchase, especially a large purchase, you have to look at a federal list to, uh, make sure that that particular vendor has not been, uh, suspended from doing, uh, business with any federal dollars or debarment, meaning that they've been, uh, uh, they've been removed from the vendor listing. So it's just to make sure that we're not doing, uh, doing too business, uh, splitting their money, uh. But it is, again, it's a federal requirement.
So we really want to.
Exactly. You will.
So, uh, the policy committee is, uh, ready to, that, um, um, that we, uh, adopt, uh, policy sixty-two five, as presented.
Second, it's moved by, uh, Mr. Monk on behalf of the policy committee. Since his recommendation is coming from the committee, uh, does not require a second. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Anything, say none? Call roll please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes, Mr. Rigdon.
Yes, motion carries. Informational, item, item eight, the policy committee, uh, pol, item eight A, policies for first reading. Mr. Monk?
Thank you, sir. Um, well, we get about two or three booklets of policies that comes to us on a yearly basis, and this is our third booklet of the year. Um, I don't know how you want me to do it. I can give a little background of these policy. I can just read off the policy. Um, we are, um, we actually went over, we had, um, our, uh, representative from Loyola come in, we met with him. Um, and he, it's great when we meet with him because he kind of goes through and he gives us all the bullet points and everything. So we don't have to read every word, every paragraph. We've got to been in a party about five, six hours meeting, so. Um, but, uh, when he came in, um, he gave us, uh, uh, kind of a review and everything. I would say ninety percent of the policies that has come before us are either, um, state, federal guideline, um, like we say, some things that we had to adopt, we had any choice in it. Um, but there were some, um, um, policies that were rescinded, that, uh, that they got rid of. So, um, I could, would you like me to go to and just name each one, or?
Sure. No, mine?
Yeah, no, no problem, no problem. Okay, so. No, this is good. Well, yeah, well, we're gonna do that on the sack, on the sack. I'm gonna do that back on the sack. Remember how we said that? Yeah, but yeah, we'll make sure everybody in. What's really good, um, um, Mr. President, that we have, there's a yellow packet that we'll make sure he's born and given. Actually, it's great because it gives you the policy and it gives you a real brief description of what's happened, what changed, what is language, took an hour, added. So it's, it's pretty friendly, friendly reading, so. Okay, so the policies that we, uh, that we reviewed, um, would be, uh, bylaws, um, zero-one-zero-zero. Definitions was revised. Bylaws zero-one-two-two, board powers revised. Bylaws zero-one-three-one-point-one, bylaws and policies revised. Bylaws zero-one-four-three-point-one, public expression of board members revised. Bylaws zero-one-six, zero-one-six-five-point-six, had, was, was, uh, cancellation, that's a new policy. Uh, bylaw zero-one-six-six, agenda revised. Bylaw zero-one-six-seven-point-one, voting revised. Bylaw zero-one-six-seven-point-two, closed session revised. Bylaws zero-one-six-seven-point-three, public participation at a board memi, board meeting revised. Bylaws zero-one-six-seven-point-six, use of social media, new. Policy one-four-two-two, three-one-two-two, four-one-two-two. Uh, though, this was non-discrimination and equal employment opportunity revised. Policy one-six-six-two, three-three-six-two, four-three-six-two, anti-harassment revised. Policy two-two-six-zero, non-dis, non-discrimination and access to equal educational opportunity was revised. Policy five-five-one-seven, anti, anti-harassment was revised. Policy five-five-one-seven-point-zero-two, sexual violence was revised. Policy two-one-one-two, parent and family engagement was revised. Policy two-two-six-one, Title I services was revised. Policy two-two-six-one-point-zero-one, parent and family member participation in Title I programs. That, this, this, this policy was a replacement. Policy two-two-six-one-point-zero-three, district and school report card local only is new. Policy two-seven-zero-zero, P A annual reports, local only, was revised. Policy two-two-seven-one, post-secondary dual enrollment option program, that was revised. Policy three-one-two-zero, employment of professional staff, that was revised. Policy three-one-two-zero-point-zero-four, employment of substitutes, that was revised. Policy three-one-three-zero, assignment and transfer, that was revised. Policy four-one-six-two, controlled substance and alcohol public for commercial motor vehicles. CMV driver and other employees who perform safety sensitive functions, that was revised. Policy five-three-three-zero, use of medications, that was revised. Policy five-four-six-zero, graduation requirement, that was revised. Policy five-five-four-zero, inter, inter, interrogation of students, that was revised. Policy five-six-one-zero, emergency removal, suspension and expulsion of students, that's a replacement. Policy five-six-one-zero-point-zero-one, expulsion, suspension required by statute, that was rescinded. Policy five-six-one-one, due process rights, that was revised. Policy five-six-three-zero-point-zero-one, student seclusion and restraint, that was revised. Policy six-three-two-five, procurement federal grant funds, that was revised. Policy six-three-five-zero, prevailing wage coordinator, that was rescinded. And policy eight-two-one-zero, school calendar, that was revised. Um, Mr. President, we, uh, visited all of these policies. In particular, one, we visited the, uh, student seclusion and restraint. Um, we really dug into that detail just to make sure that we, uh, as a district, all the employees, that, you know, security, um, you know, people who need, uh, training, uh, has to train in restraining, you know, children. So we're by love with training on how to do it, so nothing happens to the student and is done in a pretty safe and orderly fashion. Um, like I said, most of whom were, uh, mandated that we, uh, needed to change. Um, we also visited a, um, some administrative guidelines, um, she attended, you know, she's gonna take those up with her administration and make sure we get clarification on all of those. Um, and we also, um, we visited, um, the, the new policy that we had brought up at the last board meeting concerning uniforms. We, uh, we got a template and, um, we had two meetings actually. We had one on the fourteenth.
Yes.
And then one on the twenty-first. Um, and, uh, meeting on the twenty-first, we, uh, pretty much dug into the, uh, the new, uh, uniform um, that we want to bring to the board. Um, and, uh, we want everyone to, we'll forward all the information to all the board members so we can have, you know, total input from all members. Um, we think that this will be good for the district, um, for a lot of reasons. Um, we did the, uh, you know, we did the background, we looked at a lot of data. Um, and a lot of the schools that has adopted school uniforms, both publicly and privately, has seen a significant, uh, increase in just the productivity and overall services and attitudes of their school districts. So we feel that, you know, um, it's time for us, um, to, um, go this route. And we feel that it, it'll be good for our district going forward. Um, let me see if you. Okay, so, uh, we would like to, um, honor that, Ms. Escalante, honor this, there you go. Ms. Ask?
Yeah, so we talked about this, um, extensively in our policy meeting. And, uh, Mr. Monk presented us with, um, this template, which was from another district, and we found it to be very thorough. Um, we did make some changes to it, and so this is what we were forwarding to you all. So you guys can all take a look at it. And we would like to have this put through, um, for first reading for tonight because we want to get this effective in order for our upcoming school year. So we want a first second reading and adoption for the, the December meeting.
And we encourage all the input, uh, from everyone. I think, uh, seven hits better than five. Uh, definitely better than three. Um, but I think collectively, you know, if we all can, you know, put our thoughts into this, um, it'll be, it.
I, I, we would.
It'll be a win-win situation for us.
Any questions, uh, the policy committee, everything that was mentioned, uh, by the chair of the policy committee and, uh, Ms. Escalante, uh, regarding the school uniform and the parents policy, all these, uh, uh, first readings. Have you noticed on this, there's a lot of markups? Pretty sure when we look through it, there may be some additional markups that we'd like to send forward to the, uh, committee. This could be, could potentially be a big, you know, issue. Uh, particularly if you're talking about a specific uniform. Where the, you know, there's a lot of issues that go in with that, where you get, you use one vendor for a uniform? Or is it uniform dressing? Um, now, if, if there's one vendor, I mean, if there, if there's a vendor for the uniform, how do you, because, what put it out for, be able to get the lowest price or do, you know, how, how does that whole thing, you know, makes sense? Because, because particularly if you say a uniform, that mean everybody has to have the same, same, the same, same. And that could be, you know, problematic, um, but, or it could be a challenge, um, so.
No, we're, we're agreeing. That's something that we talked about extensively. Um, and, uh, we, we were going to try to be able to answer all the questions. And I believe that we hit, you know, all the points that you were talking about. You know, yes, it will be a challenge, you know, whenever you change something, it is a challenge.
Did we get any, uh, input from the building principals around this whole initiative?
That's gonna be coming up. We're, we actually have two readings scheduled for, for before the board meeting. So we have two more, and Ms. Davis is going, she's gonna take the information back to the building administrators, get their input, and she'll bring that back to our first meeting. We'll hash it out again, see what they come up, see what the other board members come up. We'll put it all together and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll, we believe we'll have something, um, by the second meeting to kind of put, you know, a final rough draft for everyone, so, yeah.
And, uh, just a little fraction of workshop?
Yeah.
You guys talk about mobile press or, uh?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's discussed very specifically in all, in this whole, so if you guys get a chance, you know, read it all because we want to make sure we have a.
We're about to spend the time for our school personnel mobile press that was discussed also.
I think the majority of the schools already have, which is being a matter of putting them on their own ones, you know, everything like.
Of course, the M C, you know, M C covers everybody.
Yeah.
But we also talked about, you know, as far as color coordination for elementary versus secondary complex. So we talked about that too, you know, and we actually put out, you know, three different colors where parents can choose from, so they're not locked in just, okay, I gotta find a light blue. And this person's got a light blue, they ain't had it, so why am I gonna get a light blue for? So it's, uh, it's, uh, variety.
I think what we came up with is very user-friendly, um, and I think from an economic standpoint, just, and, you know, for my, my opinion, for children, I think this is gonna save our household a lot of money, so.
I'm just looking, you know, just thinking out loud.
Yeah.
It's gonna be difficult, you know, with red and white, because we got white pants and red pants.
No, those are the shirt colors.
No, those are, oh, shirt, shirt. No, 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 no. That'd be real good, though.
Can you imagine those white hands on hot water? There's a lot of, a lot of friendly options for, for parents, for families. Um, just to give you an idea, I was at Walmart the other day and they have the, the style shirts we're looking at. Um, all of the colors we have here, they had them there for four ninety-seven apiece. I mean, I, I'm sure I can speak on behalf of a lot of parents. I easily spend a couple hundred on each kid right before school starts, just to try to get them through fall before winter picks, and it's expensive, so.
The colors that.
They can do an extra hundred dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
The colors that we actually came up with, um.
David's ours, yours.
The colors that we actually came up with for preliminary are available at Walmart, Myers, Burlington, um.
Target.
Target. Target, uh, Marshalls and also TJ Maxx. So all five of those vendors, all the colors are available, so.
Any additional questions, comments?
And then we're gonna get some of our kids at our second meeting and the board meeting.
Fast ones.
Yeah. And, uh, and, and.
Models.
Models.
Those are, um, this is informational item, uh, only, uh, for the first reading, uh, polls, policies that were just reviewed.
And let me make sure copies are given to everybody before you leave today.
Any additional questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Ms. Escalante. Uh, item nine, business committee, uh, I guess there's a review of these items, but one is the, uh, A, nine, A, open purchase order listing and questions on the open purchase order listing. Same thing, uh, item nine B, excuse me, contract listings, any question? Questions for, pretend item nine B, contract listings. Here we're seeing none. Item ten, superintendent's comments.
Thank you. And I do wanna start off by saying thank you to our community for the strong support that we received at the polls on November sixth. Voting yes in support of eighteen years living on non-home state properties. The yes vote is yes to our schools, yes to our students, but thank you for supporting public education. Thank you. Top twenty, the board will host a second top twenty lunch and on Friday, November thirtieth and you will be hearing more of that when they, with their comments. Edu staff update, just wanted to let, uh, everyone know that we are in the process of finalizing a contract with Edu staff. And this is exciting news because they're, um, will be taking over the role as a third party administrator for our support staff, so, um, much more to come on that in the coming days. But, uh, we are getting closer to finalizing that and moving forward, so we are very excited that the staff that we're working with thus far has been very supportive and giving us, uh, feedback with them working with other districts in this state has a number of us to thank you by the closing of P B S G. And as we already talked about, the, uh, annual audit, um, the business office did work well with the C P As and the consultants and this is our first year working with them and our department is very thankful for the support and professionalism and guidance that we received from, uh, regular. And we got to know them, they got to know us and we received another unqualified opinion for, um, non-moderate opinion, that is the highest possible rating of school in that school district we get as far as the audit report goes. And I don't wanna forget, a special thank you to Jordy Metz and Kelly Manner. This is their first audit experience and they come in there.
They survive.
Yes, they survived. And yes, they came back to us each day with this.
Smiling, smiling.
And they, they are very resourceful and top notch employees. I am very pleased to have them in our department and they are doing a great job here and this is their first year in the business office in their, uh, in their roles and they are learning a lot and I'm sure they will be the first ones to tell you that they had no idea, didn't know that, just how much work, um, was in the business office. And, um, so it's truly an eye opener for them, but I do appreciate them hanging in there and the hard work and dedication that they provide for us in that department. So thanks to both of you. The Thanksgiving Day parade, that was, um, it was perfect weather. Our king and queen, Mr. Elijah Brown and Ms. Ashley Nelson, they did represent the district well. So I wanna say thank you, uh, to both of those, uh, young people who are very proud of them and they did make Mount Clemens look really good. So the parade was, uh, just about a little over an hour and thank you to one of our M C's, Mr. Patrick, Patrick, uh, Laverberry, uh, he was, uh, onstage with our, um, the grand marshal who is Ms. Erica Peoples and of course, as you know, she is one of our graduates, uh, from Mount Clemens Community Schools and she was the grand marshal and, uh, she does still love this district, so as, uh, who is the word is, and Ms. Escalante always says, once a babe, always a babe, but she definitely proves that each time she comes and, uh, she does love her hometown. Every time she has an opportunity to speak, she speaks highly of our community and the school district, so she wants to do something to give back in a big way. So we just want to hear much more, uh, from her in the, uh, coming months. And the holiday season, please, we just want everyone to have fun. This is a fun time of year for friends and family. It's just absolutely cautious as you're going out, especially on, um, Black Friday and this whole holiday weekend. Just be careful when you're visiting and shopping, um, there are things out there that, um, you know, that you could run into and we just want to, just make sure that you're, um, aware of your surroundings, but have fun, be safe out there and have a very grateful, thankful Thanksgiving.
Thank you, now to the president. Item eleven, committee reports. Community Coalition, Mr. Leonard Barr.
Good evening, everybody. I have some, uh, news from the community coalition. We got some numbers back from our drug takeback day from October twenty-seventh and as a county, we brought in nearly three thousand pounds of unused and pres- prescription pills. Twenty-nine hundred and seventy-two, so we were just shy of three thousand pounds at the county. So it was roughly one of our more successful takebacks or the word is getting out, people are taking advantage of these and taking the seriousness of this. And, uh, since two thousand and eleven, the county has collected over twenty-two thousand pounds of pills and drugs and other things, so it's been a very successful program and we're one that we're very excited to keep going. Um, we are looking forward to, uh, moving forward to, uh, Real Talk Day coming up in fe- in, in the spring or just, I'm sorry, just after Christmas break. Uh, those of you who haven't seen, I'm gonna bring you down with the tinsel tour, uh, which will be starting on Saturday, December first on the riverfront. It's gonna be lined with, uh, trees that you can sponsor and decorate yourself for the low, low price of seventy-five dollars. They are already starting to put them on the riverfront. So when you ride by the riverfront park, you'll start to see Christmas trees are lining up, so they're getting ready to, uh, make this happen. They've already sold several at City Hall, so that's still available. Uh, and again, to kick off for that, the tree lighting is on Saturday, the, uh, December first at five o'clock, goes till about eight, I believe, will be carolers and other things like that, so it should be a fun family activity for those of you who wanna come down and get in the Christmas spirit. And other than that, on behalf of the coalition, I'd be wonderful and happy Thanksgiving. Any questions, Mr. Leonard Barr?
Can you say there's, there's, there's still trees available?
Yes, would you like an application? I have some right there. If there's no more application, I'm gonna. If anybody needs an application, just go to cityamongclemens.com and click on the tinsel tour icon, you can download the PDF and print it out from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard Barr. Curriculum Personnel Committee.
Right. Yes.
Couldn't understand him though, can you decipher, can you translate that doctor's language, please, sir?
You gotta, you don't have a flat dial on the scanner, so you know what I'm doing.
I did have a tippy wheel, I had a big tippy wheel on top. We met November thirteenth, uh, one of the, um, brother committee was there, um, they take away the teacher on who, they were, they were one of the P D As, uh, teachers of the students. Uh, what, uh, we came to, uh, agree was further investigation to make sure all sides of stories are correct, you know, his story, your story, and the right story before we go to, um, top line of the heads and make sure it's all right.
So then, Dave.
Uh, to me was Buddha Essa and I made a copy, um, in the format of a bio, so you can read those. Also, performance mattered, first phase implementation, our curriculum director was over at the I S D at the time we were doing, you know that. New curriculum information is coming down the pipeline within the next month. We probably will inform the, uh, adoption committee, um, before we review, review the material for the person. Recommendation made by Mr. Brody on summer reading camp. We also discussed a period of intervention format with struggling high school students. They learn by teaching them, basically have to teach their students that are, uh, they not being at certain level, or they are being at advanced level, to come down and help the younger or those that are not succeeding. So instead of getting a, pointing the finger and putting the blame, we want them to be the heart of the special. Looking at that, that is not a, well, confirmed action, that is something that only gets the law. And as y'all know, going against the law is either stick or another thing, same stuff. Uh, we did, did it take away from the last meeting, discussed about, uh, how to maintain certain danger, uh, evaluate for, for getting students. Uh, we're gonna just hold off on that and look at further research if that's what you got. That is about it for the meeting. Any other questions?
I got a question regarding the, uh, establishment of a committee to, uh, review materials, uh, is that a staff generally, are you saying that's gonna be a board committee or the staff is going to put together a curriculum committee to go over the, the resource materials before we purchase them for, you know, diversity and all, all the kind of issues and items that, you know, uh, of that opposed to a board committee or anything?
It would be, I have a combination of the staff, admin, uh, there'll be teachers. Yes, we would like to have at least one board member and a parent and even a student if we, uh, if possible.
Okay, you know, that, that's not, that's not anything new. Uh, in my experience, there's always been that type of committee, uh, in place when we're reviewing, uh, textbooks and any other learning material before we bring them into the, before they're presented to the board. That committee vets all that, vets all that stuff out before they recommend to, you know, before you bring a recommendation to the board.
And actually, their committee is gonna be, uh, the committee is gonna be the combination of a bachelor teacher, a bachelor teacher, also can be part, part of the committee, is also gonna involve the finance business. So by the time it gets to the board, if they have to be vetted there, we have a lot of, you know, that's, that's the layers.
Aside policy, you know, it might even go for policy also.
Yeah, because, you know, because my, my feeling is that they're the experts in education, not us. And so the recommendation, you know, should come from that group of experts and not us.
Exactly. Any other questions?
And it is exciting because we haven't been in a position to.
Any other questions to the chair?
You talk, you did talk about, um, personal thing about the county supervisor, which is a separate candidate, separate candidate going through the process. It could probably be a name, uh, we're looking at, probably having somebody for the position named by the superintendent, that's why I like that.
What position was that?
County supervisor, the manager superintendent, the head of the board, but, you know, it's about giving help inside your department.
Okay, so it's, um, more like a, an accounting supervisor.
In a county, you said, I heard you say county supervisor.
You know, I speak the word, I didn't.
Accounting, okay.
I think I heard the same thing.
That's my wedding, what, what, took the county supervisor. I had to ask the question, okay.
Thanks for that clarification.
One day that might be at that level, we don't. So, all right. Any other?
Oh, the other thing we are finally getting the bands on, uh, buses.
Oh, yes, yes, I didn't make that copy in the email, but, um, this is something that's gonna be hopefully coming soon. I know that we got bad ass out and can't sit too far away, ours not that long.
You ever seen what I think you say?
It does.
What?
Yes, so they have to make sure.
Fine.
Yes, fine.
All right, very good. Ownership.
All right. Trying to use it, re-enter that?
All right, hope y'all have some good news. I see some eyes. Merry Christmas.
Well, I, I'm gonna tell you what I told the superintendent when I, you know, they had those nice shiny buses out there on, on back to school.
Yes.
You know, then when the real school showed up and I'm like, okay.
And I'm the agreement of this bus, they're not the old bus.
Right, five years is the oldest.
Five years old. So it's true. That's it, that's my meeting notes, and I'm hoping y'all will see it.
Any questions on the chair? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Legislative committee, the legislative, there was a legislative committee, uh, but it was held on November thirteenth and the legislative representative from this board thought it was more pressing to come to a board workshop than to go to a legislative committee at the I S D, so I did not go. They have not sent me minutes from that meeting, but I know something, there was preliminary discussion, uh, from the, uh, September meeting around, uh, proposal one and what if it passed, which it did pass, um, and what, what school district would be doing in terms of revising their policies or creating new policies, uh, to address the recreational use of marijuana that was passed by passing adoption of proposal one. So I don't know what, excuse me, outcome of, of that discussion has yet. When I get the information, I'll, I'll pass it on to the board. Did the superintendents talk about?
We did talk, and it doesn't change as far as the school district's going, that it's still a federal law, that it is not permitted, so you can, uh, let it be on the school.
Thank you, any additional question? Athletic ad hoc committee.
Been a long time, but we did have a meeting, I remember twentieth, which is Tuesday, which is like yesterday. I gave a long list to the superintendent and I was gonna just chit it back a little bit. Um, you take the notes?
Yes.
She gonna give us real about the meeting.
Yes, we have a few items.
Oh, you're fun and that real good, isn't it?
Very slick.
You are, you are.
But yes, we do have a number of issues that we wanna look at, um, as far as the, uh, equipment, um, our coaches and just the way that, um, our department, our athletic department is, um, running, so we just wanna look at a few things and, um, have a few more meetings for discussion to come to some consensus and see how, if needed, we need, you know, that whole part of the athletic department and, and the whole team and everything, so we really have a light at the, at the base of the official equipment, the kids have a baby, looking at the transportation and the coaching, so, um, uh, the boys out there, athletic department.
Basically, we have more control of the, that's control, we have control, uh, we wanna try to get, you know, when you're working under that, uh, student consideration, uh, budget wise, you know, because we're, you know, we still working on the budget, we're gonna make sure everything is all but is, uh, within the limits, that's what we're trying. Uh, will be decided yesterday for the meeting, turn out the meeting or Wednesday meeting. We are probably, and probably we will have another meeting very soon, like, next week or two, trying to get as much as I can out of the game for the meeting, so.
We are.
I tried to give him this Friday, but he didn't wanna do it after turning in. Uh, any questions? I mean, um, all jokes aside, it was a very serious meeting, we had a lot of information and I didn't wanna bring too much to the table without a lot of information, background information, everybody was a question, and this, so that's why we have another meeting very soon.
I got, I got a question, um, maybe a statement, but, um, I know we had the issue with truck equipment being under those regulations.
And I knew those were just for these two years. And that weather damage and now we don't have that, was the high jump pad and all that stuff. Back when I was coaching, you did not receive your paycheck until all the equipment was tagged, put away. Uniforms tagged, put away. And I did girls' basketball and I did girls' volleyball. I literally did not have to buy anything for two, maybe three years because I make sure everything was tagged, put away, boxed. Back in the, in the, we had, with the washing machines, we had all the cages. And it, and all of it was here, cages, so all that stuff got put away. Have you guys, because it's, and I say that to say this, we cannot afford dying equipment.
Mr. Monk?
Yes?
Mr. Monk, we have discussed what you are talking about, you can tell that later. Like I said, we're trying to bring it forefront right now because we wanna get more background information. To make sure we have, like I said, right now, that, that conversation right there, it could be all night long. So for us to come unprepared, get that, it, it won't be prepared to go on, and that won't be prepared anywhere watching. But we did discuss that, I promise you discussed that, all the way down to the paychecks actually. So we discussed a lot of things that you already hit, um, and that will be addressed. And we're working hard on trying to make sure everything is right now. I haven't had a committee meeting, uh, athletic ad hoc, because the ad hoc knows something that would come forefront. What we did, what I did was have this meeting at the end of the fall athletic campaign. And looking at recap and seeing what happened, evaluate from there, and then also looking at what's gonna take place with, with the sports. It's running, it's in connection, so all that's gonna all die in the end. So, yeah, I guarantee you, next time we have a meeting, have to be, I feel, use as much as I can. Some more information to be given, was we need email first, or we need to take, you gotta play, what's this, with Mark? Go ahead.
I'd like to piggyback on what, what Mr. Monk was saying, because I too was a coach, I was a track coach. And like Mr. Monk said, all that equipment was, was inventoried, put away. I wouldn't get the check because I was on the board, but I still had to follow the process. With, with, with that, the lack of accountability over a period of years, and I sat at this board table and talked about, why is that equipment still there? It's gonna be, well, I, I could've talked, I'm blue in the face because it fell on deaf ears. And now we don't have that equipment because it's ruined. And we don't have surplus money to buy new equipment. So that means when we have a home track meet, we can't do the high jump. Or we have to borrow somebody else's equipment. Um, we, um, on the boy's side for years, when we have a home meet, if the competing school had any pole vaulters. Somebody from the coaching staff would have to go over to their school and witness their pole vaulters jump the, the height. And make that as part of the meet, because we didn't have the equipment here on site. And there's gonna be something that we're gonna have to do, uh, for the spring, um, in order to compensate. You know, I don't know if, you know, it's something that had to be decided, but if you go to the other school and watch them high jump? Or watch your, you know, watch them high, do you do a high jump the day before the meet? Um, and then bring the results to the meet because, or do we borrow somebody else's pads and, you know, mats and stuff? Um, so, you know, we, we, we put ourselves in a bad situation by not holding people accountable. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. President, we have also vetted that very deeply. And we did look at the responsibility and kind of what it changed the man. And that is also going to be something that's gonna come from, like I said, our meeting was not show up, eat the bullets. You know, we didn't have a discussion with the elders, but it went down to budgetary numbers in my eyes. So, I mean, we wouldn't, athletic, it's not supposed to be this complicated, but it's going to be under control. We have a kind of, and that's gonna be looking for. So our plan before then we get bored, we're gonna have something in place for athletic program and deliver it more substantially. So, but, so, we did make that also.
We made real conversation.
And we also went to the point of fundraising and how to, um, throw stuff into it. If we're not, you know, if we're not, we agree, then we're not gonna tell anybody how to do anything, we'll give you some suggestions and you can take it.
And what the auditor said about fundraising.
Exactly.
It was, it was, it was very technical, I read this, and we're not a right area. I'm talking about that, that was on the list, so.
I will, I will say that Earl has brought this up. I recall the first time on the board, yeah, in the spring, why is that equipment out there? And now it's ruined.
It was there, it was out there about six, seven years.
But then it, it didn't have to be out there. Those pads are always put in the garage.
Garage.
They're always put, all that stuff fits in the garage.
But so somewhere along the line, it was falling through the cracks.
It kept falling through the cracks, even though I talked about it, that, the deaf ears.
The knowledge we had yesterday was looking at a piece of equipment walking past me, and you have pretty much blast, blast, and chase me. And, uh, we know from this, uh, this point forward, that's not gonna be, the plan is gonna take place in our, in the future. And I guess, and I might wanna be in the course, but I will, as much as I can, I'll give them some spurs if I have to. But, um, that will be addressed and soon, I like I told you, I ain't wanna put too much on top of the plate. So I think right now, it's a kind of.
And I have started the conversation.
Any other questions, comments? Oh, man, the bus, getting this out of the bus anyway.
And we rolled, we rolled it back, reversed it, run it front again, now we gonna let you go. Educational Foundation, there was no meeting. Agenda item twelve, board comments. Mrs. Escalante.
Well, the first thing I wanna say is I think we really need to, um, reiterate what a great honor we had. Um, that's, that needs to be out there, that needs to be publicized. Um, we're at a hundred and twenty-eight K. That's looking amazing for the upcoming school year for nineteen twenty. So I wanna thank Ms. Davis for keeping us on track with the budget. I wanna thank you and all of your staff, Joyce, who over there, again, Hallie, every, everybody in that office. This has been a very stressful period for you guys, and I know that, I, I don't claim to understand that. But I know that you guys have had to work long hours just to get it to that point. And, um, I think I can speak on behalf of all of us, and certainly to appreciate that a lot. And it showed in the numbers that we've done diligently with that, so thank you, because that is the future of the district. Um, let's see, um, I wanna congratulate my colleagues again, who will be elected. Um, and also to Teresa Jarrett, who is gonna be a new board member, um, she's anywhere, one, one, so. Um, but okay, he's gonna come help and volunteer. He's gonna still stay on the policy committee and chair that of.
Oh, yeah, even if he gotta come to his house.
That's right, we'll go to your house, just have some food for us, and we'll be there. Um, a couple of cool things that went on over at, um, Seminole. And last, at the beginning of the month, a company called Even Keel Exotics came out to the school. Um, we actually used them over the summer for my son's birthday party. And, uh, they were generous to donate their services for free to come to the entire elementary school. They went around pad to pad and they brought, um, porcupine, an alligator, some hedgehogs, um.
Turtle.
And a tortoise. And the children got to have a very intimate experience, they got to actually touch the alligator and the tortoise. Um, Ms. Desiree was amazing, um, the owner of the company's name was Whitney. They're all the way out in Temperance, Michigan, so she drove eighty miles one way to come up to Seminole to donate her services. Um, she said that she'd like to come back in the spring, so I'm hoping maybe to get them over at King for that, for, for, I will, yeah. So that was a really neat experience for the children, and they made a bunch of, um, thank you cards and drew pictures. And it was just so, it was so sweet, so I just wanted to give a shout out to them, whether they'll see this or not. Um, I just thought it was pretty neat that there was somebody willing to do that, because that's pretty costly when you hire them, so. Um, and then another neat thing that, there was a lot of Thanksgiving meals going on around at Seminole on, uh, Tuesday. And my son's class, they did Friendsgiving, and, um, the parents donated food items and they had a meal with their classmates. And I thought that was really neat. Um, so thank you to the teachers that put those little extra details in for our children and make the kids feel special. Um, I think that's so important, so I appreciate that as a parent and as a board member. Um, and I just wanna say that I wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. I know that, um, sometimes it's easy to focus on the negative things that go on in our lives, but I think we all have something we can be thankful for. That is always good, and we truly are blessed to live in this country, um, despite what goes on politically at times. Um, we really, we have no idea just how that we got it, so, um, I'm thankful for all of you. And I wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving, and those are my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Escalante. Mr. Voorhees.
I would just like to, uh, to say that this, I actually have a, it's clean audit, as, uh, as I'm growing up. I also, we celebrated Veterans Day, and, um, I believe that we have one veteran on this board. Uh, did, you know, I can't thank for your service, but, um, and I always appreciate my freedom, um, from the service that is given by our men in, uh, armed forces. Um, thank you for getting out and voting. It, it was, I just loved to hear those numbers where you turned around and say that, you know, this was the largest off, you know, if you can call it an off-year election. Uh, the, the column was tremendous, and that just shows that people right now, you know, um, are waking up. And it's sad that, you know, we need to voice our opinion. I was obviously a little concerned with, you know, with our, uh, village, but, uh, because I didn't get a lot of feedback at the fire store.
No, no.
You didn't get feedback at the fire. How did you get that?
These are impulse.
Exactly, so I, I was glad to see that that was, that was almost a two to one relationship. And, and nice to see that, um, our few candidates, uh, who are elected. Again, appreciate the service that you do folks up there as, uh, as a school assistant. With that, once a bather, always a bather.
Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Mr. Monk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like to echo my fellow board members. I just wanna really touch on something. One hundred and twenty-eight thousand. When I was first elected to the, to this board, I believe we were north of three million in deficit. If I'm not mistaken. Right. So in four years, we have cut our deficit to one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. That is absolutely amazing. First of all, I would like to thank our teachers, our union representatives sitting here. That would not have happened with the teachers being agreed with the concession. So please, send my heartfelt, our heartfelt, to the teachers and the union, thank you. Thank you to Ms. Davis and her staff because of the concessions that the teachers agreed to. You guys controlled the books, you guys handled the money, you guys made sure it was perfectly spent. Spent on what we need, you know, spent on not the, not, not the, uh, not the wants, what we need. Um, so, you know, great job, the union staff, Joe, um, just a great job. And I would like to say thank you to the public. You know, with, what the teachers have done, with, with, um, Ms. Davis and her administration has done. And what the public, what you have granted us, um, I believe that, and I will go out on a limb, that we will be in the black about this time next year. We will be in the black. Hopefully not the, the border bowls up, you know, anything like that. But, um, great job to everybody, um, and I wanna say thank you to, um, all who voted for me. Um, I don't take this job lightly. Um, when I started to run four years ago, I wanted to run because I wanted to be part of the solution. And not be one of those people who just complain all the time. What are you doing over there? Ah, no, let me roll up my sleeves, let me see, let me, let me bring what I can bring to the table. And, you know, I'm one second, so I'll bring my, I always say I'll bring my one seventh to the table. Um, and I think collectively as a group, you know, for the last four years, um, I have some awesome board members. Um, some awesome superintendents, I think I'm on my third, should I say, fourth superintendent, I think? Third? Um, but, you know, we all want the best for these kids. I keep saying it, it's about the kids, it's about the kids. Um, but we want the best for them, we wanna give them the, the best public high education that we can possibly give them. Prepare them for life, to, to prepare them to do the great things that they wanna do. And whatever endeavor that they wanna do. So I just wanna say thank you to the public for, uh, saying yes to the millet. Um, we definitely appreciate it, and, uh, we will definitely make sure that we continue to, um, um, oversee. And make sure that we hold all people accountable, um, and make sure that we, we do right. And, and our, I always say rebranding of our district. So, thank you to the teachers, thank you to the administration, thank you to my fellow board members, thank you to the public. Um, and, um, I will end with good, better, best. Never rest until your good is better, better than your best. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Dr. McFadden.
Hey, guys, I'm Mr. Monk, and thank you everybody else around, I appreciate those who voted for me, those who did not vote for me, which was awesome. Because, uh, your opinion, your opinion, they are pretty valuable, we are marked with it. And something that people should probably understand is that this is a very selfish or self, non-selfish, you know, because this is not a big issue. We sacrificed, we forgot. What we, what we do here is because we are trying to do best. And I know that our deficit has increased from almost four million dollars, but we're not ready to, you ask me? But we still at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Really, we should get twenty-eight thousand, be nice to it. Eighteen, eighteen dollars, you know, but it would be nice to it. But nonetheless, what, what we need to understand is, it's still America, not a sprint. And even though we're close to the finish line, we can't get wrong. Because we get very close and slip, and that's, you know, we're back in a four million dollar deficit. I think all the teachers, the staff, everybody around, and the students. Because those are the reasons why we're here, because of students. And with that being said, only thing you can say is just thank you. So those are my comments, and I'd like to say goodbye to Mr. Monk.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. I would like to say thank you to Team Mount Clemens Community School District. Uh, that encompasses everybody, because as everybody talked about, started out with the, you know, with the positive audit. Digress back to four years ago where we were and where we are today. Had it not been for teamwork, we would not be in the position that we are right now at this point in time. And so I'd like to say thank you to the entire team, um, whatever part you play in the Mount Clemens Community School District. Thank you, uh, for being part of the team, being a team player, and moving forward, uh, as a team and not individuals. To help us, uh, get to where we need to be and beyond. So thank you, uh, to Team Mount Clemens Community School District. Uh, I would like to thank the community, as my colleagues, for your, your positive support, uh, for the millage renewal. Uh, needless to say, had that millage not. Needless to say, had that mileage not passed, we would be in dire straits. Not right now, but starting next year. We would have another opportunity to put it, put the ballot initiative forward and attempt had this mileage renewed. Thank you, um, for seeing through all the mud and the muddle and all the negativity and seeing, really seeing the importance of what that renewal meant for the school district and the city. Because if we don't have a viable school system in the city, the city is not gonna grow, it's gonna die. Because people aren't gonna come, move into an area where they don't have a viable school system. So, uh, not only did it help the school district to survive, uh, it get, it pumps some breath of life into the city of Mount Clemens. So thank you, uh, to those voters who saw the need and the importance of passing, uh, the mileage renewal. I would like to give special thanks, uh, to my colleague, Mr. Ed Bruley, uh, with all of his leadership and his counsel, uh, and his advisement around this whole mileage effort. Nobody can say that from these microphones or from any school-funded, uh, advertisement that we said, "Support them, vote yes for the mileage." What the district, what we did as a district was provide the information. Uh, we didn't try to sway you one way or the, or another because that would have been illegal. Uh, we, what the district did was disseminate the information. Uh, it was a bunch of individuals who took it upon themselves to do various things in polling and campaigning and, uh, leaflet drop-offs and whatever individuals did to, uh, get the message out, uh, to, for a positive vote and the importance of a positive vote for the new, mo- mileage renewal. And a lot of that was spearheaded by Ed. And he's not here tonight, but, um, I, I would like to publicly, uh, thank Ed for his leadership, uh, and advisement in that whole effort, uh, as, as we form committees to, uh, to move, uh, our, uh, campaign forward, uh, for the renewal of the most recent, uh, mileage. So thank, big kudos out to you, Ed, thank you so much. I'd like to say congratulations to Ms. Jarrett, Mr. Monk, and Dr. McFadden for being elected, uh, and re-elected to serve on this board for another four years. The ride has been kinda uncomfortable for the last four years, but we put our seat belts on and had the motion sickness bag in front of us, um, in case we, you know, got, needed to use it. And, um, we as eight people, um, come to conclusions and decisions. We did, sometime we disagreed, but at the end of the day, when the decision is made, that's the decision that we took out and put out into the universe. It didn't matter what our individual vote was when the vote was cast and it was all said and done. That is how we move forward as a team. And I don't see this being any different, uh, for the next four years, uh, whomever served on this board. So I would then like to say thank you to my colleagues for being re-elected, for taking up that mantle to continue to serve because, um, it was, the last four years have been kinda tough. Um, and to, uh, had I not been on this board, I would, you know, I would, I don't know if I would wanna come on a board that was. I'm coming into that environment, you know, and oh, no, everybody's gonna be mad at me because the decisions I make, you know, is cut, 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 or reduce, reduce, reduce. And that wasn't fun. Um, and like, like Dr. McFadden mentioned, you know, it's a marathon. We're, we're not there yet and even when we get out of deficit, we still got work to do. Uh, because we don't wanna go back into a deficit situation, we wanna build a fund equity. So we still, as a collective body, as the team, we still have work to do, uh, to move the Mount Clemens Community School District to where we are and to where we know it should be. And, uh, I'm sure that, uh, we will all, uh, be up to that task. Let's see, what else do I have? You guys covered everything and made it difficult for the, the anchorman to, you know, come up with some new stuff to add to the equation. So I can't, I don't have anything additionally written down and I'm not gonna sit here and just make up words. So those are my comments. Um, and, uh, and normally, I, at the end of my comments, I would say, those are my comments, the chair would move to adjourn. But if you look at the agenda, uh, we have another item on our agenda, uh, before we adjourn the meeting. And that next item is the superintendent's evaluation continued. And that's where we are in the agenda. And since this is a personnel matter, um, the individual, uh, who's been personnel that's being, uh, evaluated has the option to holding that evaluation in an open or closed session. Excuse me. The superintendent has, uh, wished to have the discussion of the evaluation in closed session. So the chair would entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of the discussion and evaluation of the superintendent's evaluation. Moved by Mr. Monk to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the superintendent's evaluation. Seconded by Ms. Escalante. Uh, any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Meeting has been done, a roll with.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.